This meeting is being recorded.
Hey, is Franco here? Is Franco still there?
What's up, brother?
Hey, what's, um, any sewer board meetings?
Yes.
Coming up or?
March, March, March. I'm gonna send out a notice this week. So it's first Thursday in March.
March 3rd.
So, uh, March the 3rd, yes, four o'clock. You'll get a meeting notice, uh, probably this weekend.
We'll do a little housekeeping on a couple of things that we have going on for the, uh, the next month. Uh, you know, in, in our time of the meeting when, um, everybody else, all the applicants are taken care of. There's a couple of issues we gotta take care of. Christian, how are you?
Fine. How are you doing?
Good, thank you. Welcome. Mr. First, Steve Pagan, is that how you say your last name? Paul's on Salvatore is connecting. Dave, do you have a flag for us when the time's right? There we go. So, um, maybe I'll have Larry, you want to start us off with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, um, I will start this meeting and what I always say to everybody is since we are doing the having the meeting, um, virtually through Zoom. Just to touch base on a couple of things, um, we, like I said, if we're speaking, please give the other people that you're talking or that, you know, at least a chance to finish what their thought is. Um, before we jump in, I've been on a few meetings where it turns into a real. Uh, I don't even know, just one heck of a mess when you're trying to hear somebody else say something and, and somebody else steps on that other person. So just, um, let's give each other a bit of time before we start in the conversation. There is just that delay. Again, it's, everybody's respectable. Usually we never have an issue, which I appreciate from everybody. So, um, it's just, we all want to be heard and make sure we get our points across. The meeting's open, uh, obviously, and we have the minutes that we will approve at next week's meeting. For January 20th and January 27th, 2022. I'm gonna start off with old business. We have the cuisine machine incorporated, the site plan review, Route 9W, section block and lot number 88.1-3-18. In the DB zone, applicant is seeking site plan approval of a site plan to permit a restaurant use mobile food trucks and takeout service only. It's an unlisted action and everyone's been updated with plans and the memo is received and circulated to the board. Um, I'm gonna let, um, the applicant speak to it. Or Patty, if you're, you're taking on this, if you wouldn't mind speaking to this?
Sure, absolutely. Um, we've been working with the board for a couple of, um, months now and, uh, we submitted changes based on the last memo that we had received. We have changed from gravel to blacktop in, uh, all of the parking and driveway areas. The only gravel will be where the food trucks are located. We've revised the parking space dimensions as requested. You know, the, the only issue that I guess I, maybe I'll put a call into, um, Andy Learn or Christian to find out. I could not find any ADA code requirements for a takeout restaurant. Basically, again, you can see the topography on the site and the spot elevations. It is a relatively flat surface. It's inclined just a few degrees to aid water runoff. And there is going to be car service provided for anybody who doesn't get out of their vehicle. We're not proposing that anybody stay on the site and eat any food. So we're not providing any picnic tables or any other. So I, I don't believe that we, that there are any specific ADA codes for this. So, um, but again, I'll, I'll defer to, to Christian and Andy and reach out to them on that. We did confirm that the sign is compliant with the zoning requirements to the best of my ability to, to read them. It's less than 50 square feet per face, um, and it's more than 15 feet off the edge of the pavement. There was a question that Andy had regarding the riprap, um, the.
Christian, how are you?
I'm here.
Andy Willingham inspected the riprap and he found it to be in satisfactory condition and functioning properly. But he just wanted to make sure that the contractor did a more thorough inspection during construction, um, in case there are any minor repairs that needed to be made. So that's why he had made that comment. We are working with, um, both Central Hudson. Let's see, who am I working with? Todd Serba and Jeff Skinson, uh, we're working with at Central Hudson to come up with the layout. That utility pole will need, um, a guy, an anchor. So, uh, we may need to relocate the pole slightly. And we just wanted to make sure before they do the layout, they wanted to make sure that the planning board found the plan to be satisfactory, um, to the extent of them going through the design. And we did get updated lighting plans from Salux, um, along with the, fixture cut sheets. So I believe that all of that is now in compliance as well.
Okay. Um, anyone from staff want to speak to this?
Uh, yes, um, I have a question for you. Like where are you regarding, uh, the DOT approval? That's, that's one, uh, significant thing that we just want to make sure that we have, uh, you know, have nailed down. Regarding the, uh, that I guess there's a right turn in only and a right turn out only because it's a, a four lane divided highway here. Like where are you with, with DOT?
The locations and the geometry, we, um, have been approved by John Riley from the residents in Kingston. We are not going to be able to make application, um, for an actual permit because DOT is in the process of changing their permit application from what I understand. But typically what has been acceptable to the planning board, and I guess I just need to confirm, um, is that the geometry and location is sufficient. And then obviously no construction can start on the site until the permit is in place because we have no way to access the site except with a, with a permit.
Okay, would, uh, Mr. Riley be willing to issue a, a letter, even a conceptual letter of approval? Because the board's gonna need something.
He'll usually send me an email based on our site review. The application is fine, the design. So I'll ask for that from him.
Okay, uh, going on, moving on to the ADA, uh, concerns we had, uh, you know, it's still really not clear to us what the ADA requirements really are. Uh, this doesn't really, I don't know if this falls under building code because there's no real permanent structures to be, uh, created here. Uh, however, it's, it seems that, that there should be on every other site plan where there's ADA parking. There's usually a designated ADA parking space with the appropriate signage that's at, at least set aside. Since this particular site plan is sort of a hybrid between, you know, it's, it's, it is a site plan, but there's no permanent structures or we're just not really sure what is required. Maybe we just knew that the, the building inspector has, uh, some insight or, or an opinion on that. We'd be willing to listen to that. But if there's going to be ADA parking, it's, it's typically striped and, uh, signed accordingly.
Yeah, and I guess if I could just add to that, the, the point is that there is no parking here. We don't want them parking. And so it's, um, it's more than stopping. So I guess it's standing, um, because they're limited to be there for 15 minutes. So they are not parking spaces. And we want to make sure that we're clear on that because obviously if this is a takeout, the food trucks don't want any cars parking there. So the sooner they can get them in and out, the, the better it is for their business. So I guess that might be the distinction is that in this particular site plan, there are no parking spaces per se.
So is there anything in the, perhaps the zoning event or knows, is there any provisions in the code for standing or stopping spaces as opposed to parking space? I'm not sure if the code makes that differentiation in any way.
The building code is not, um, as far as I know, the, uh, I mean, I think what, the way we've been trained in this is, uh, the, the site must, must apply, um, reasonable accommodation. I think is the language of the law. So I think I agree with Christian that having a spot which is designated, uh, handicap. With only eight spots, I don't know what, which spot that would be. Uh, and then the other fear I have, um, when we talk about, uh, reasonable accommodation is if you're going to put a handicap spot there and sign it, you have to have, uh, van width, um, and, and discharge area to the, you know, to the passenger side of the van. I don't know where you'd put it on the site. So, um.
Yeah, and it appears that Patty, you, you've reduced these, these, the number of spaces from 10 to two.
Ten to eight.
Oh, yeah, for, from, uh, yeah, bye, bye, bye to from, uh, 10 to eight there. Um, so that's another little consideration there. When this project is, is really going and, you know, and, you know, the food's being served, i- is there any anticipation of, uh, vehicles stacking or queuing? In here, uh, we're just, you know, I'm just kind of looking at it from a, a circulation standpoint, almost, uh, like if there's not enough area in there to service more than eight people stopped or parked or whatever the terminology that we ultimately land on is. Would other vehicles, would they start stacking up in the drive-through lane? Would those start, uh, stacking up? Out perhaps towards Route 9W? I'm just kind of looking to see if there'd be any, uh, issues with traffic stacking at back, back out towards the highway, which could, uh, hamper any new customers coming in.
Yeah, again, if, if he has eight people there at one time, they're going to be a very, um, a very happy, happy campers there. The, the goal is that nobody is there for more than 10 or 15 minutes. They, uh, they are supposed to be ordering in advance. But since this is a new project, I, I'll be honest, none of us know, right? I mean, you know, there, there is no such animal like this around that I could even model it off of. The closest thing we have is when you have a hot dog wagon on the side of the road or we have one on 290 or, yeah, 299 across from Speedway that's quite a bit off the road. And I know that anytime I have gone by there, I've never seen more than one car there. So it, it was, uh, very difficult to speculate on the amount of cars that we would need. They're not necessarily starting out with the five food trucks. He wanted to be able to expand to that number. And if he gets two or three food trucks in there and they're that busy, then that's where it will have to stay. I mean, I, I wish I had a great answer, but I don't because we know, we just don't know. And, and I don't want to make something up and, and pretend that I do.
Patty, if I could, as I'm looking at this and I see, and I'm listening to a Christian saying and, and your answer to it. If somebody were to pull in here, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, if somebody were to pull in here and let's say they're gonna go to the middle food truck on the left hand, on the right hand side. So I, I can't see the number on it, but the, the middle food, food truck. So, and they stop there and you've got other ones coming in to go to the other food trucks. They're stopped there, they're standing. That may be an issue for what Christian's saying as far as traffic queuing on the road. You, you see what I'm saying? So maybe the next guy wants to come in, he wants to get to the last food truck in, in line. So now it's really gonna start queuing up pretty quick.
Well, we're not talking about hundreds of feet between these. I mean, it's, it's, I made the parking spaces substantially larger than is required for parallel parking. Because I understood the fact that this isn't typical parallel parking where you would stop on the street and then back and maneuver in necessarily. You know, the hope would be that people would park at the furthest spot to, to make it easiest to go out. But of course, again, we all know in reality that people don't do what makes sense. Which is why I made the spaces so much bigger than what they needed to be. Um, and certainly.
You're saying exactly what I'm getting at is because people aren't going to follow what you would think. We would hope to, to expedite people in and out as fast as possible. It's not gonna happen. We could pray, we could wish upon many rainbows. If you know, it's never gonna happen. So that's my only concern for that, that area there is, you know, Christian brings up a good point and it's been in an email going back and forth with the board members as far as a queuing up and slow down, uh, lane maybe. But then after I'm looking at the map and I'm seeing a slowdown lane, that's even, might even infringe upon the next door neighbors exit in and out of their driveway. Depends on how much you use.
Yeah, that's all guard rail in front of there. That's, um, so that would not impede on that. So we have a 10-foot parking space and then a 12-foot wide, um, one-way lane and then another 10-foot parking space. So we, that's quite wide in there and obviously a car is not the entire 10 feet wide. I, I did not measure to see whether somebody would actually be able to squeeze by there. But you'd have to have quite a few cars in there. I mean, we've got parking space for eight and you would have at least another eight cars in there before they'd even get out to the highway. Now, if I was passing somewhere and I already saw 16 cars, it's not like we're talking about a Dunkin' Donuts where they're queuing out 12 cars. I just don't anticipate that happening. Again, that would be, you don't, you know, you don't see that many cars in front of most restaurants that you go by at lunchtime.
Patty, you make an excellent point. Um, the, the hiccup, and I think we joked about it just a second ago, is that people will not, uh, park. Let's just say that they had to park in the center, one-way aisle you have there, uh, even if they pulled over to the side, 12-foot width. Um, there, people aren't gonna park as far away from the, the, the one, uh, food truck that they want to go to. They're gonna park as close as they can to it. And I think that's, you know, that, that was part of the conversation, the email conversation that was happening sort of offline. Is what happens as Scott suggests, when you go into food truck, food, uh, mobile food vehicle number two down here, um, you know, to, to the, uh, southernmost point. And if somebody wants to come in behind you to go to the top, uh, northernmost one. I think they, I think there's some, a sense that, that the site feels very, um, has a lot of opportunity for, uh, food service opportunities, uh, you know, with five trucks. Uh, and therefore, and, and, you know, I made the statement, um, in the offline discussion that, you know, let's say that it's the best food you can get on the, on the drive home. Um, and you call ahead, you know, and hopefully you call ahead because you're gonna hit and run. You're gonna grab your food and go as quick as you can. The, the hiccup is with, with 12-foot right, uh, one-way through the parking on either side of that. The hit and run and, and your food's not ready, you get to sit there until the food's ready. So, uh, I, again, I'm sort of making the point that, that, uh, the offline discussion felt that the site had maybe too many, um, uh, food trucks, um, for, um, for what's available for parking. If it was a two-lane, you know, through fare, uh, it might be a little, feel a little different. Because then you could, you know, one, one lane would simply not be parkable, even though we know people park wherever the hell they want. Maybe that, that's my two cents. If that helps the board at all.
Right. And I guess that, that does answer my question because I, I, I basically just wrote down concerned by the planning board that parking in aisles might not accommodate the number of trucks. And as you were speaking, you know, and so I guess that's, that's the bottom line. I was trying to get to what's the solution? And, um, if it's the board's recommendation that I go back and, and discuss that with the applicant, that that's your concern. You know, I know he wasn't planning on starting with all five. Um, so if, if it becomes, you know, very successful with three or four and that that's the end of it, that's why I had made that statement earlier. But if that's the board's concern that, that maybe is the max that the site ever can, um, support, I, I certainly will go back to the applicant with that concern.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, uh, tangent off that, of that. So with five, uh, trucks, uh, you have five employee spots and we're going to assume, or I'm gonna tell the board that they have to assume that each of those trucks, the, the employees will, will, uh, carpool to the site. Um, because I, uh, and, and, you, you know, you know that I'm in shape, right? Because round is a shape. Uh, you know that I've stopped at food trucks in the past, um, and, uh, I've never seen only one employee in there. So if there's only one car per, uh, it better be at least two or three people in that car. Otherwise you're gonna start, you know, uh, they're gonna start dropping, you know, other spots not designated as such. So, uh, a- again, if, if the, if the total count came down, uh, if the board was, was open to that or, or interested in that, then the employee parking could come down. Maybe we could figure out a way to maybe widen that one-way smidge. And Patty, you mentioned before that that's gonna be a paved route through? Is it full paint through? Yeah, okay. So, um, that's, so no curving, I assume.
No curving.
Yeah, so people can be able to pull off in the grass and stuff like that. If they have to get around somebody or something?
Yes.
So that satisfies that, that issue for me. Uh, but the, uh, you know, the counting might be, was an issue offline, so.
Yeah, and the reason that we made the, um, the pads 80 by 30 is that there's gonna be any number of different types of food trucks. Some of them are trailers that are pulled by a vehicle. Hence the 30 feet. So some of the employees would be in that trailer that's pulling the food truck. Some of the mobile food trucks are actually driven there as like a van type. So that was, um, what was conveyed to me from the property owner. That's why we made the pads the eight by 30 so that they would be able to accommodate that extra vehicle and the trailer plus another parking space.
Why don't we have, why don't we have a designated pickup spot which would be at the, uh, you know, I guess, uh, according to the diagram at the, uh, top of the, uh, of the, uh, semicircle?
Well, every single place that you see a car, that's a designated pickup spot. And that's why.
I mean, my, my big concern is that, um, you know, I'm going with the, you know, best case assumption that, you know, this project is a huge success. And then we have, you know, traffic just stacking out on 9W which, um, I'm, I'm just thinking about the potential for accidents. I mean, you know, traffic, you know, you know, goes by at a pretty, you know, uh, quick, uh, pace there. So I, I just want to make sure that there is never the potential, no matter how successful this project is, that we will ever have any traffic, you know, stopped on 9W. Scott, Franco has something to say.
Sorry, Franco, go ahead.
I gotta mute myself. Um, have we received, so we haven't received any comments from DOT, but I still have the problem with coming up to the site because you're coming up an incline and you're making that sharp turn. The problem I got, Patty, how are you gonna handle larger trucks that can't get on the site that park onto the shoulder of the road?
So again, that is why we proposed the, um, wooden fence. We, I suggested to DOT when we were out there because that's a concern that I have because you see it happen all the time in a, uh, an unnamed little deli down in Milton, by Milton Turnpike and, um, they actually park on both sides of the road, which really creates a hazard. So that was a particular concern of mine. And I did suggest to DOT that we put, um, for whatever it's worth, I mean, because part of it is an enforcement issue, but I suggested that we put no parking signs. And he said, yeah, good luck with that. Um, that's not gonna do any good. So then I said, well, how about if we put, a wooden fence? And, and that is why we had originally put the post and rail fence. Then at the last meeting, the town suggested that we also put some plantings there because then that also would shield the view of the unsightliness perhaps of the underbodies of the, the mobile food trucks. So again, can, can I guarantee nobody's going to do it? No, but we are putting, um, fencing and plantings in place to certainly discourage it to the greatest extent possible.
So then when somebody parks on a shoulder road, whether it be a car or a box truck or a tractor trailer, you actually impede the car exiting the site because he can't see south pulling out into the lane, which causes a safety hazard.
I don't know what.
On that turn, which is actually when you come up at that turn, you're actually coming up at the swimming pool. I drive it every day. Actually stop, fight. And when you're at the farthest end of the site where that driveway is, like where the monument, where the sign is, the billboard, it's hard to actually see south because you're actually on top of the hill and you're looking down, you really can't see what's coming down around a turn. Um, I kind of encourage you guys, you know, it's, you can't drive on the site. You gotta actually pull off to the shoulder road, actually go and take a look at that.
Yeah.
And you know, let's, we talked about this last time, cars aren't driving 45, 50 miles an hour coming through there. They're probably doing in rush hour. It's pretty, I, I drive at rush hour, coming home every night. During the morning, his hours operation are gonna be seven to 11. The other issue I got is none of these trucks will be, I know you're gonna have onsite electric, but none of these trucks will be using portable generators and running their generators to 11 o'clock because you look like you're pretty close to that house there from that number.
That's why they're gonna have electric service.
Right. So, yeah, I can't have, we can't have any generators running that might interfere with, uh, noise levels going to the house next door.
Yeah, again, we, you know, I was there on the site with John Riley. We did measure the site distance. We went the proper distance off of the roadway at the proper height and, um, and felt that that site distance was adequate, but, um, cer- certainly I encourage everybody to go take a look.
Yeah, one, I, I would recommend that the, the site distance measurements, I, I recommend that those be just put on the site plan, just in a little block over on the side, just so there's something filed, uh, just to kind of memorialize that. It's gonna be part of DOT's review and approval anyway. But I would just ask that, that be a little data block over on the, on the side of the site plan, just to memorialize for both the north and the south, uh, access.
That's a great idea, Christian. I'm gonna, uh, second Christian's earlier idea to get, um, you know, John to give us a conceptual letter. It'd be very helpful.
We also, um, we have the DOT sheet prepared so we can submit that as part of the application, which will not only have the site just, which not only has the site distance on it, but all the other details. So.
Oh, yeah. If, if you can include that, that, that'd be great because you're gonna have to do some work there with the, uh, shortening that guide rail, even though that's not part of my review or the planning board's review. It's, it'll give the, uh, the board an idea of what's gonna happen there with the, uh, yeah, modifying that, that terminal section.
Sure.
Regarding, uh, the engineers' report of reviewing that outfall, if we could just, just get a, a, a short letter from him, just something for the file to, you know, just to verify that the condition of the outlet there is in good condition, uh, would appreciate that. Also, um, Patty, i- is, is that a DOT pipe?
Is it a DOT pipe? The applicant put that pipe in himself with the permission of DOT. There was a small drainage easement, um, that DOT had obtained on this property. I, I, I don't recall the date. The applicant, when he wanted to fill the property, um, contacted DOT and got a permit to put the catch basin in and extend the pipe.
Okay, so, but they didn't do anything, you know, administratively to extend the easement. So is that extension of the pipe from where the catch basin is to the outfall, is that solely the owner's responsibility to maintain?
To the best of my knowledge, I did not see a copy of the permit. I was not involved in the project when that was done, but I'll check with the applicant and see if he has that paperwork.
Yeah, and this is, it's something that's, you know, because obviously there's a pipe that goes all the way underneath 9W. So it's carrying DOT's, uh, stormwater. It's just a little bit unusual to me that they would, the DOT would allow something without having all kinds of easements, you know, drafted and prepared just to make sure that they have the ability to go in and or someone has the ability to go in and fix the pipe in case there's a, there's a flooding situation on the, on the highway there. Provide information when available regarding the electrical service for the site. We talked about that. The proposed lighting plan. The light levels at the, uh, entrance and exit seem to be a little bit high. They're around seven or eight, seven or eight foot candles there. Is there any way those can be brought down a little bit? So we're concerned about a little bit of glare. I think those are Ballard lights that are being proposed there.
They are. I had, um, spoken at great length with the light designer at Salux. And she basically said that the, um, the candle that is being proposed by the town i- is significantly under what it should be for parking lot lighting for safety purposes. for parking lot lighting for safety purposes. And that because of the bollard height, it's only either three or four, I think four feet tall. It's on the cut sheet. That if you don't have it, um, at that lumen level, it's not gonna do any good. Cause that was a comment, I had sent her the comments that from the last go-around, um, and she and I had a lengthy conversation about it. So the ones at that entrance and the exit are the bollard lights. And I believe that she reduced the lumens on the taller lights.
Yeah, one has a, a double-headed fixture, one has just a single-headed fixture, um, those based upon the, uh, the light.
And she said, basically, yeah, basically the lights that she's doing for the bollards have four quadrants to them. Um, and right now she has the two quadrants that are facing the parking area as the only ones that are lit. Um, and her recommendation was that if the planning board would not, it's her recommendation that this is proper adequate lighting for this site. But if the planning board still wanted it reduced, her recommendation for reducing it was to make, um, the same light level, but just one of those quadrants instead of two of them. But it was her considered opinion that this was proper lighting for the site.
And is it easy to modify those quadrants? Somebody says, is, is that like a lens or a cap that kinda snaps into the the bollard just to modify it? So, so if it needs to be modified at a future date, that's not a huge undertaking?
Correct.
Okay, I just, just wanna kinda put that out there for the board in case they, uh, in case, in case there's complaints or, or once the thing's in, uh, in operation here, uh, there, there's a little bit of, uh, flexibility instead of having to replace the entire fixture, they just kinda snap in a little like, like a lens cap to cover one of the, uh, one of the, the LED quadrants.
What are they lighting up? You wanna light up the road for the most part, right? Going into the property.
Yep, right there, right.
So they're, why aren't they facing into the property?
They are.
Oh, that's what I was getting, I see. I, I couldn't see the numbers, don't mind me. But I was, I was saying, this way the glare isn't on the road when you're coming up on that property itself. That's all.
Now, is it, you know, for, for, for this one, it's pointed to the basically north, northwest. That, that's the, the overall direction of the illumination. Uh, for the cut sheets you provided, uh, just maybe strike out or circle of the options that, uh, are intended to be shown, like the, the color temperature or any, any of the other, you know, the myriad of model numbers there. Just maybe strike out the ones that don't apply or highlight the ones that, that do. Did you, I didn't see a, a detail for the light pole base. What are those gonna be affixed to? Just in the ground or is it gonna be a small? A concrete post?
Yeah, there, there are no proposals for concrete posts. That was a comment, um, that we had re- received last meeting. Um, so I had her move the light poles further off the roadway so that there was no concern about them being hit. My understanding was that you had asked for a concrete base, um, to protect the light pole in case it should be hit. So we just moved the light poles back because there are no concrete bases proposed.
Okay, so how are they gonna be mounted in the ground? That the, just, just the post just to get driven right in the ground?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Not sure if I've ever seen one done that way.
Uh, I've seen some, uh, I've seen some poles with helical, helical coils driven.
Um, let's see. Uh, we're almost done here. Uh, along the eastern side of the drive aisle up towards where the, the, the porta-potties are, if we can just pan to that area. Might wanna go to the other, uh, sheet. Thank you. Yeah, right around that bend there, uh, we're recommending that some type of protection be put in there because the grade kinda drops off. I, I think, uh, your, uh, existing contours got frozen on this last plot. They were on the previous one, so maybe if they could just be added to the, uh, the sheet there. Because the grade drops off, there are concern there was this may be put some type of protection, whether that's a, a guide rail or some additional rocks or boulders, just to kinda prevent uh, vehicles from going over that, that incline.
Yeah, yeah, cause all of the contours aren't shown. It's very clearly where the limits of the fill are, so that, that does get close there and that would understood.
And, uh, if you're gonna do boulders, we just asked, you provide some, uh, here's some approximate dimensional specifications for the boulder size, like, like how big, but what's, what's the weight of them? We wanna make sure that if they're intended to stop a vehicle, they're, they're large enough to, to do that and not just kinda take one hit and then go for a, go for a ride. And topographic contours were taken off the drawing. Yep, that, that's the extent of our comments.
Okay, does anyone from the board have any additional comments, questions? Just please state your name.
Yeah, it's Sal. I'd like to talk. Hey, Patty, uh, my concern is, um, and I know we can't quantify this, but I did walk the site. And, uh, when this was first proposed, I was really super enthusiastic, but now I'm kinda worried that, uh, we've got a, a fast road. And we've got, um, cars coming in, uh, and pedestrians crossing, uh, you know, holding their food, um, you know, within basically forty feet of the, uh, shoulder of the road. And, uh, so if, um, if you look at the food truck, uh, walkway on the right, the first one on the right, uh, there's a, there's a parking space there, but there, there could easily be people walking across there, holding boxes of food. And cars entering from, you know, a sixty mile an hour highway, forty feet away. That seems to me, um, pretty dangerous. Um, and, um, so, uh, you know, wanted to talk about that and, you know, how the cars would decelerate or how we would know that they would decelerate. As you said, we haven't actually ever seen this exact setup. Uh, and, you know, this exact situation. Uh, but, you know, we sort of design everything for the worst-case scenario. In other words, we always design for the maximum live load, you know, we always, we always design for, uh, full capacity. So anyway, assuming that, uh, there'd even be cars parked there and people crossing and night and cars coming at pretty good speed there. And, um, so, uh, you know, and, and it's compounded by, I think, by the fact that there are so many food trucks that the site is very tight. And I, I also wanted to ask you, uh, are, are the, um, are these, uh, parapet stones and the top of the grade, are they approximately where the top of the grade is now or is it extended, uh, to the east?
That's where the top of the bank is now.
Okay. So, so no change to, no, no actual filling?
All the filling that is, is complete.
Yeah, okay, okay, I got, yeah, yeah, okay. All right. You know, I, I almost, I, 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 I don't wanna think, uh, a- as a designer, but this sort of brings like this idea that, uh, uh, you know, it, if, if there were less food trucks, I would want the, perhaps the lane moved to the west. Um, and, um, you could actually, um, I mean, I don't know if you'd wanna explore this, but, um, you could actually maybe have parking along the west side, diagonal head-in parking along the west side, and then, uh, the parking lot would be closer to nine W. Uh, more like a conventional parking lot. But that would, um, that would essentially, if you ran into the parking lot at high speed, then you could just keep going down the travel lane of the parking lot and you wouldn't be, you wouldn't see pedestrians crossing that lane. And, and you know, it'd be sort of the same thing with a, a big truck accidentally pulling in. He would just be pulling into a big travel lane. I mean, or I'm sorry, into a parking lot through lane, but he wouldn't be in the middle of all the pedestrians and all the people on the site.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sal, I lost you there.
Hey, Sal, can I just say something? So you're
Yeah, go ahead.
You're almost thinking like when you're on the, uh, throughway and they have some of them pull-off spots where they have the little bathroom. The lane stays, you know, out towards the outside of the road and everything.
Exactly.
Right, because I, I don't even think that, like you were saying with cars flying on there, I guess they call them deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes. I mean, I can't even imagine trying to, you know, get slowed up enough, like you said, somebody walking across from coming from one car to go over to that first.
Yeah, exactly. And they're holding a plate, you know, they're holding a box of tacos, not exactly looking.
I see, I see your, I see your point coming off nine W here with a higher rate of speed, maybe some speed bumps. That'll definitely slow them down.
I mean, y- y- you gotta go out there and walk around on it and look at the traffic from where these things would be and realize how close. Cause I, I went there and, you know, it kinda scared me, to be honest with you.
So Sal, I, I wanna try to understand what you're saying. It is, you're, um, suggesting that perhaps we move the travel lane all the way to the west and put all the food trucks on one side?
Yeah, I mean, okay.
Trucks on the east side?
Yeah, uh, I, I sort of am saying that, um, uh, the i- the idea, you know, I, again, is, well, I think of, think of it this way. You know, what can we real- expect from the deceleration there? Let's start with that realistically. And, you know, you can take it back, uh, to the engineer and talk about it. But, um, uh, if, if it's really realistic that people are coming in at thirty, um, you know, I think it's better that the pedestrian crossing is, is, that we don't have a pedestrian crossing that lane there. So anyway, roundabout, I know I'm, I know I'm going roundabout. Direct answer, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Uh, if the parking were closer to nine W and the, and the, and the food trucks were to the east, it would be, I believe, safer.
Okay.
And, you know, I know usually I'm like, mister, oh, let's have more green space and stuff like that. But in this case, no, the opposite. I think we should have it paved and open to the highway so that everything is visible and, um, you know, and then behind all that could be some plantings, but I think out front should be all business, should be a big lane.
Yeah, kinda like, kinda like how they have on the throughway where you
Exactly, Charlie, exactly.
Where the little bathrooms are and stuff, um, cause I think if you did that employee parking area, and I don't know how big them spaces are, but you might be able to fit one of the trucks in there, even if you went to four trucks instead of five. But it is, it is a real concern. And I think, I think they're called, right, deceleration lanes and acceleration.
Yeah, that's the idea. I mean, you're, you'd maybe, I don't know if, I didn't even put a scale on this drawing. I didn't get a print of it. So I don't know, but just in theory, yeah, in theory, if, if that would work, it would be safer.
Might be something to look at.
Something to at least sketch.
No, we appreciate the feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? If so, just state your name because I can't see everybody. I'm flipping. No, I see nobody. Thank you, Dave. Um, okay, um, where do we go from here?
Well, you know, it, it looks like the board is looking for me to, to consider some, um, alternatives to the design. So I will go back and speak with the applicant and, um, you know, measure some of the distances, see what the safety, um, you know, with the deceleration lane, what the lengths are, be able to address. Um, I'm glad that some people got to go out and look at the site. And when you do, oftentimes that brings that up additional issues and concerns. And we'll, I'll take them back to the applicant and we will, uh, do our best to address them.
Great. If anybody hasn't gone to the site, I do suggest that Sal's recommended also, um, go. It's really important. Um, you know, you do get a better feel of what you're looking at when you're on it as opposed to the paper. So the print, I should say, so. But yeah, by all means, if we can go there. Um, Dave, if you
Yeah, I have one more, I have one more, uh, statement, I guess. Um, I, I do, I do like Sal's idea about, uh, you know, realignment of where that travel lane is. Um, my, my only concern, uh, based on, on that discussion was the idea of, uh, parking, um, where you would pull in and then have to back out. Because I think backing out might be a little dangerous, uh, if you're coming in at thirty miles an hour. Um, because, uh, I've seen people leave sites at thirty miles an hour, uh, to get on the hobby because they don't see anybody coming. So, um, you know, if there was a way to stack them in such a way where they could just pull in and just be able to continue on their way, uh, you know, forward, uh, that might be, um, it might reduce the number of fender benders on the site.
Dave, if I can add to it, also you have, you're gonna have the power coming across the highway and the pole. You're gonna have the signs up front. You're, you know, you've, so there's a lot in what Sal's saying. These other obstacles are gonna be in, in the way of Sal's recommendation on that too, I believe. So, um, it's definitely a, might be a complete revamping. And can I just say, wh- why don't we go with less food trucks and then add more later? And what I mean by that is not give you all the sites, but reduce the sites that you wanna use. And if at a later time this becomes so successful and we don't have any issues, come back to us and say, hey, can we add two more? It may make a, a world of difference. And Dave, you tell me, um, or Paul, tell me if that's a feasible thing to have to be able to come back to the planning board to have more added to it at a later time.
It's totally feasible.
But it might make your plan a little different and a little secure and safer for people.
Right, right. And if it is successful with three, then maybe we don't need five. So, you know, again, that's, um,
Are they all one owner? Each of the food truck gonna be different owners?
It's anticipated each food truck will be a tenant. And so potentially one person can own two food trucks, but these are gonna be spaces that are leased out on, on a monthly basis.
And another thought that came to my mind was refrigeration. So if any of these trucks do stay onsite, uh, to bring Franco's point of noise and sound that the neighbor may have to deal with. And anybody down below in the backside of that hill, I'm sure that'll sound pretty, um, echoey to them um, on the houses down below by, uh, behind the, um, the ball field there. So in case there's any refrigeration running con- consistently overnight.
Well, that's, that's why they have the electric service onsite, so that there are no outside noises. And Salux is the only thing in the backyard, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just noticed, I just noticed one thing, Patty. I'm looking at the street view since we're, we're talking about the, uh, the site distance and things. Just take a look. It looks like there's an overhead wire that runs from the property to the south, the one with the pool on it. Like it runs across the property and connects to a, uh, utility pole that's just north of your site where that billboard is. Can maybe just take a look back and see it on street view. Not sure that means, it, it's, it's only a single wire. It's probably not power at all. Just maybe take a look at that. I don't know if that.
I'm sorry, where does it go, Christian?
It looks like it starts at a pole, like a, a pole right near the house, the, the neighbor to the south, the guy with the pool.
Okay.
There's a, there's a single pole by the south corner of his house, and there's an overhead wire that runs to the north and goes to a pole that's, it looks like the wire would kinda scoot across. It's, it's not obvious to me that it's actually over your property. It might run along the right away. It's just, just maybe take a look at that. I don't know if that's gonna interfere with any of the operations that you have going on. It's only a, a single strand.
Okay, I don't recall seeing that in the field. I'll have to go check. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at, at street view and now this, the street view imagery I have may, maybe iffy. I mean, the image capture date is December twenty-one. But it's only a single, it should be pretty mint, but it's just maybe take a look at that. So I didn't know if there was already power on that side of the street. It's not obvious that, that there is.
There is not, no. That's why we have to put the pole from the
Right.
Yes, side.
Might be all, all leftover, you know, single wire for a telephone service perhaps. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next on the agenda under old business is, um, Nathan Lewis, special use permit two forty Vineyard Avenue, section block and lot number ninety-five point two dash two dash twenty-one. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for the, for renovating the second floor garage into a living space. The space is twenty-two point five by twenty-two point five for a total of five hundred and six square feet. There is a deck and stairs for an outside entrance to the space. It's a type two. And we've seen the updated plans. They were circulated to the board. I believe what they were looking for the last time was a revised stamped print for that property. Um, that's one thing we were looking for and now we see that. Okay, anybody have any questions? Say again, Dave?
Uh, Nate is, uh, is muted. I'm just asking to unmute.
Okay.
There you go. Oh, not yet. Mr. Lewis is with us. Just trying to get him unmuted.
I see him there.
Can
There you go.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's all we were waiting for, Scott.
That, that is all we were waiting for. Do you have anything to say, Mister, Mister Lewis? It's
Um, no, I just, uh, I hope this, uh,
No, I just, I hope this meets your expectations and, you know, I'm excited to get this going and get going and get legal here and, you know, and I want to be compliant, not to be corny, but it's, that's what I want to do, you know, that's my goal here, so.
Very good. Anyone from staff have anything to say?
No, I think we're good.
We can move this to a public hearing next month?
That's correct.
Okay, so I, I'll tell you with the procedure, could you tell me what the next, so it's a public hearing?
Absolutely, Scott, you want me to do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so Nate, what will happen is the board at the next meeting, you don't have to come to it, is going to declare a, instead of public hearing for next month, that will occur on March the twenty fourth. And we send a mail around to your neighbors, they get notification of what you're proposing, and they can come and make comments or not, and quite frankly, in this instance, I don't think they will. And the board will listen to their concerns, if there are any major concerns that, you know, trip up, you know, in terms of impact to neighbors, the board may consider them and they may not. And if the board is happy with the application and the public comment, next month, they could move to approve.
Okay, so you're saying that I, should I attend this meeting or not?
Next month you will, yeah, and I'll, we'll email you to remind you.
Okay, great, okay, if you notify me and then I'll, and then I'll be there for that, that's great, great.
Yeah, easy bridge.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so you're all done with me?
Yeah, thank you. We'll see you next month, thank you.
Good night, good night, everybody.
Next is administrative businesses, we have the villages. Dave, would you mind speaking to this a little bit? Or maybe I should have Mr. First do it first, I'll do that.
Mr. First could probably discuss what they're requesting. And then we can, we can fill in the rest.
Hello, everybody. Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hey, everybody, I'm John First, I'm the attorney for the applicant, the villages, and Mark Sanderson. Also with me tonight are the traffic engineers from Creighton Manning. As you may recall, this project was approved. It obtained a special use permit site plan approval back in the fall of two thousand and one. There were numerous conditions as part of that approval process. And we're here because we're we're seeking to modify two of the conditions that are related to the New York State DOT final approval. We'd like to defer the New York State DOT final approval until prior to the issuance of the CO. So right now, we would need final DOT approval before the chair signs an approved and final site plan. The reason is because I'm sure, you know, a lot of people may be aware, there's a huge backlog with the New York State DOT. Now, we already have conceptual approval, and that was obtained back in the fall of twenty twenty one, right before you guys had had granted your approval. Creighton Manning is working with the Highway Permit Division and going through all the details, but unfortunately, it does take time, you know, the devil is in the details. We may not have the approvals to the end of twenty twenty two, especially if we need a dedication. Again, we're working with DOT to see if we can avoid that, if necessary. There's no indication, you know, that DOT has any issues or concerns other than the fact that of just going through the process and dotting the i's and crossing the t's on the design. We feel that any potential traffic impact is not going to really be evident until the site is occupied, so therefore deferring the DOT approval to prior to the issuance of the COs, we don't feel it's going to have any impact on the community. Again, we have Tony Christian is here, he's, he is the actual traffic engineer who's working with the New York State DOT on finalizing the highway work permit. And Jesse Vogel is also here, who's at Creighton Manning, so they're here for any questions or or comments. And if, actually, if you gentlemen have anything to add, if I missed anything, Tony, feel free to chime in.
I think you summed it up perfect perfectly, and right now we are going through the process to see if land donation is necessary based on the grades that are out there. And as John mentioned, if if land donation is necessary, that will add considerable amount of time. Because DOT will not grant a permit until the land donation process is complete. That's all I got.
Paul or Dave, anyone from staff want to speak to this?
Yeah, I just, just so everybody knows, Paul Van Cazan with us tonight, he's traveling, so we couldn't join us, so it's up to Christian and I to see if we can help you guys with this. I I have talked a great deal with Andy and Paul on this, I know Christian's been part of that loop. The, I I am, I was a little hesitant at first about that, just because it's, you know, not something we would typically do. I am unfortunately hyper aware that DOT is way backlogged. I know that DOT is changing its permit process. And I don't know, I don't think I even got the guidance for that application at the moment, I don't know if they have yet, so super backlog, you know, I understand the applicant's position, they're, you know, they're going to want a sign map at some point, probably help them with financing, and I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to that. The the only sort of thing that sticks in the back of my mind is theoretically, they they could have a a fully built out building ready for CO before they can get a a work permit from DOT, depending on what DOT's timeframe is. But the, and the applicant should know that, because I'm the guy who signs the COs, until the mitigation is satisfied for the the traffic impacts, which is whatever the DOT and the applicant comes up with, whether it's the light and 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 the sidewalks or whatever else, whatever the DOT and the applicant figure out, there'll be no CO on on the building. So, you know, hope springs eternal that the that the applicant and the DOT can get together and get this done while the building's being built and do the remediation, which you guys helped, you know, worked on with them to to get the site, you know, the traffic for the site, you know, handles. I just want to put that out there that, you know, there's no CO for the building, no occupation for the building until the traffic mitigation is satisfied, because my permit, my building permit to them will be twofold, it'll be for the building and for satisfaction of site plan. So so having said all that, a very lengthy diatribe to say, you know, I I think, I think I'm okay with it, I don't think it's very a little risk to the town on this, if any, so I think it would be my advice to, you know, accept it, review it, you don't have to make a decision tonight. I I talked to Paul a little while ago, before he started traveling, and said, if you guys were open to accepting this proposal, that you could direct him by me to craft a resolution memorializing any decisions you make.
And with the, I'm going to ask just a quick question, the impact on the town for making such a decision at this point, what would that be again, or should we really wait for Paul to give us any? It wouldn't be, since there's been a conceptual, you know, acceptance of this already by by DOT, am I right saying that?
Yeah, I I think so. So part of my responsibility, a part of all the town employees' responsibility, including the consultants, minimize risk to the town. We have looked at this nine ways on Sunday, and we cannot find any risks. The risk is entirely on the applicant, because they could get to, you know, a completed building and DOT could still be dragging its feet. There's no risk to us. I I have absolute discretionary authority over my permits and COs. You know, either you satisfy what the, what's required, or you don't, and if you don't, you don't get the CO.
With, hearing all of this and getting the emails that we've gotten and reading those, is there anyone that is opposed to having a draft resolution done by Paul, or do you want to take some more time to think about it? We can make that decision next week. But I'm going to ask the board to interject on this, it's definitely not my sole discretion, I'd like to hear from everybody.
Is there any?
Like, I'm sorry, I see Franco's hand up, Jerry, I apologize. So I didn't know if he has.
Dave, Christian, my question is, if we do this, would this set a precedent for this board with projects going forward along the nine W corridor, or say the two ninety nine corridor? Where are we with that?
I think you just have to craft the resolution in such a way that, you know, like Dave said correctly, you know, this this project has been reviewed numerous times by the town consultants and by DOT, obviously, so if there's any type of significant change, if there's like a last minute gotcha from DOT that would necessitate, say, a site plan change, they would have to come back before the board for amended site plan approval. I think if you craft the resolution tightly, just to, you know, and and put this, you know, the requirement in there that, you know, no CFO shall be issued by the town building department unless the following things are are satisfied. I think, I think you just have to make your resolution very tight. And I think that, I don't know if it would really set a precedent based upon other applications that I'm hearing, not just in this town, but in many other towns, DOT is, you know, they're, they're like the final final piece of the puzzle in a lot of these, and.
Christian, if you don't mind, I could definitely vouch for that, being on the county planning board, we are dealing with the exact same thing, the major delays throughout the county with the DOT. So, I mean, when I read this, I was really surprised, because I wasn't sure when we were going to get this, or if something like this was going to come before us with some of the projects that we're dealing with. So I I am aware of it, and just so the rest of the board knows, being on the county planning board, I I did know that some of this was going on, so.
It's definitely not just a town of Lloyd.
Right. Right, it is an unprecedented issue, so for making a precedent for anybody else to think that they could do the same thing, I I would have to say definitely it wouldn't be, but.
Yeah, I I think I agree with that, I mean, I'm sorry, John, what?
I I just want to emphasize that we already have conceptual approval from the DOT, we got the letter back in in September of twenty twenty one, so we don't anticipate any major changes. We are, it's really just, again, the devil's in the details, and that's, and that's really the process that that Tony is working on now with the DOT, so I I, you know, we can't envision any changes to the site plan, but obviously, you know, we're proceeding at our own risk, but I just want to make sure all the board members understand that, you know, we might be a little different from other projects, because we have a letter from DOT that's conceptually approved this. I'm not sure if other applicants, you know, are that far along, and that would be, in my mind, that's a huge distinction.
Yeah, I I agree, that that letter was copied to you all, September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, the special.
I mean, before I, before I even gave an opinion on this, I would want to see, you know, just copies of all the correspondence between applicant and DOT, I would want to see. I don't know who 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 would do this, maybe Christian, but some kind of an outline of what the overall process is and where it is now and how long, I mean, you really can't say how long it's going to take, but what are the steps to get to the approval, what what they are?
I believe, based on what the the previous applicant consultant just said, you know, DOT is in the process of revamping their whole process. So I I can't guess exactly what it will be two, three months from now, or whenever the DOT wheels finally turn and get into the new new process, but certainly getting all copies of correspondence from, to from DOT. You know, the dates of the plan sets that were reviewed and, you know, conceptual approval issued for, that was just, is as much documentation as we can get. That's, it's just going to help make things clear, and this leaves a paper trail for someone else to follow. In case it gets contentious, which I don't anticipate it being, this is just one of those things that has to go through the process.
So anyone else on the board?
And then one other thing, I guess, related to that, and this would be for Tony, or Tony and John. Do you, you're saying there's a possible land dedication, is that for like guy wires or something for the signals, or what is that for, shoulder paving?
I'll defer to Tony on the exact.
Yeah, I just, what is, what are we talking about?
So that's for, so that's for basically the sidewalks. They like to have the sidewalks entirely within DOT property, so if our sidewalks, based on the grading and the ditches that are out there, have to go onto the private property, there would be some kind of land donation from behind the sidewalks that would need to be deeded over to the state.
And that, so you're doing a land dedication of the, that the sidewalk improvements into the DOT right away?
Yes, if 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 necessary.
Yes, or, you know, sometimes if the, if the DOT didn't request a land, you know, an actual fee dedication of the land, they may entertain like a use and occupancy permit if there is some improvement on a, from a private property that kind of sticks into the DOT right away a little bit, but both of those, you know, there's pros and cons to each one of those approaches, but though, you know, and then they both take time.
So the sidewalk is is currently designed to be on the village's property, correct? And possibility that that would transfer to state, right? Is that correct?
So the sidewalk could be running along nine W.
Yeah, I know that.
So within the DOT right away.
Oh, so, all right, so right now, as it shows on the map, that the sidewalk is on DOT right away, so what would be dedicated?
So right now.
Give us a drawing, I mean, between, with all this talk, of what exactly, I just, I just like to know what the issue of the dedication is, or what the land is.
So Tony, this is related to the sidewalk on the opposite side of of nine W, is that accurate?
Correct.
And around the mobile, so Sal, when they cross nine W and try to put the sidewalk to the plaza, that's the issue, because the DOT mobile's right on the road, I mean, they're right on the road, so I I I've spoken to mobile, and I know the applicant has, so they're working with them to get that straight, and you know, DOT is going to want to own that sidewalk. Yeah, so.
So it's not the village's property that might be dedicated, but somebody else's?
Yeah, that's right.
There's another, there's another party involved here.
And we do have a map of that, and I'll I'll circulate.
Yeah, I'd like to just understand it, you know, I think.
I'll circulate that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm going to say at this point, if we could just go with, let's get all the paperwork that we can before next meeting, we'll be able to review the paperwork. At that point, maybe we can have, you know, more discussion on what it is we're going to be able to do, or have Paul draft the resolution. But, you know, based on some of the information, we're still lacking to see exactly what it is we're talking about. If you could understand where we're at with that, so. Yeah, so when you're talking about the paperwork, I think you've been pretty, we're pretty up to date as of right before your approval back in the fall, so you want the paperwork between September and now, as far as getting the final highway work permit? The the correspondence and the actual, I'm going to say sequence of how this is going to happen, as Sal suggested, and that map, if we could just see the, we realize it's not on the, on the village's property, but on the other side, just so we can tangibly see something, that's all. Yep. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I just, I I'm not going to go back the last ten, you know, five years at this.
No, I don't.
I'm going to focus on from September to now, what's happened since we got that conceptual approval from the DOT.
Agreed, yes.
Okay, I think, John, I think the board's looking for that you are in progress.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? You're good. Thank you for coming. All right, thank you, John. All right, have a good night. Have a good night. Next, next on our agenda. Steve's nine W collision, thirty three twenty three and thirty three through thirty three twenty five, Route nine W, section block and lot number eighty point three dash one dash twenty one point one ten. Sign approval, applicant is seeking sign approval for a monument sign in a previously approved location. So as we've seen the drawings, you want to throw that up, Dave, if you have it, this it's not changing, it's a little, little larger, is that what it was? Or is it the exact size?
We we have the size, one twenty by thirty eight, six foot tall. Twelve inch deep box, got a nice skirt in the bottom. Yeah, it's actually a pretty nice sign for, for the light industrial zone.
Yeah, I think it looks nice, it's a cool looking sign.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Who is our sign guy on the board?
I am.
Charlie, you want to give it a quick review or something and tell us what you think?
I think it's a good sign now, I just, I don't have my book, I don't have my my thing to go over.
This is going to be a quick one, nice sign.
Yeah, I think it's a nice sign. I I don't know what the dimensions are, but it was already pre-approved for a sign like this a while back, before.
There was a sign in this location, they're changing it, alternate signs require review, this is a nicer sign than what was there.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, where do we go from here? So we just move this one on and it, I'm all for it. You're muted, Dave.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, you guys can actually move right now. Um, although you don't typically know in a workshop, but this is a sign, so you can, you can move right now. Um, via a motion to approve the sign as of fifth uh tonight and then he can come to me tomorrow for a building permit and we can get rolling.
I could say we have a motion to approve. Thank you, Jerry. Who's second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second and he can come and get his approval or permit anyways.
Uh, yeah, just uh maybe a quick vote.
We need to run right through it. Larry? He mouthed a yes. I'm a yes.
Jerry, yes.
I'm good.
Yes. Sal?
Sal's a yes.
Franco?
Yes.
And Lambros?
Yes.
It's a, a one hundred percent yes. Very good.
Steve, Steve will see you for a permit, man.
We can't hear you, Steve.
That's okay.
All right. All right.
Thumbs up, you're good.
Two thumbs up. That's good. Very good. Thank you for coming.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, sir. So we've only got a couple of things here. If we can go over them pretty quick. Um, as far as our own board cleanup, some things we got going on. Um, as I always do, I try to send you guys out some of the county classes that we get. Sal is pretty good at getting some from where he works at for what we could do to maintain our membership and keep up with certain things going on, but. Um, always, like you said, if you can't do them, you can't do them. We understand, but you're trying to get as many as you can in. And I'm going to send one out that may be a multi-night class. It might be four classes. Uh, from the county, it's four classes, it's in March and it has to do with solar arrays and stuff like that, which I think is going to be a pretty good um. Uh, learning, um, a learning capability for all of us, so that, that'll help us out quite a bit. Um, the next thing is, our next meeting, I've, I've kind of thought this out a little bit. We were thinking about it, Charlie and I spoke, Dave and I spoke. Um, I'd like to run it by the board and what we would like to do as far as meetings go, um, as far as in person. Um, you know, whether or not you'd like to do them in person, continue to do them this way for a little while longer. Um, I've been following the county guidelines and based on what the rest of the board voted on uh previously, I'd like to do the same thing. Um, is vote on again tonight what our intentions are. I would only ask that if we were going to do it. If we vote yes to in-person meetings, that we could do it for next month, not so close to having it like next week. Um, a lot of people changing their schedule. If that's the case, you know, a week's notice is a little difficult sometimes too. So again. Uh, keep in mind that it is bringing a lot of people into the, into the meeting rooms. Um, I don't know everybody's position on what we feel about COVID or what the case may be. I watched the town board meetings and they seem to conduct the meeting, but there's not that many people in those meetings. Um, we have a staff of, you know, the board and um our staff is twelve to fourteen people. Um, that's a lot of people. And then if everyone comes in, um, it could be pretty, pretty tight in the room. So. Just think of that when we vote, which we'll do in a little bit. Um, but I do think we need to address that and have the board make that decision. As chair, there are some things that I, I will do and get to you guys and tell you what I'm going to do. And this is a health and um a health issue, I think that all of us need to partake in it. So. If we don't mind, I'm going to take a roll call vote of whether or not we have conduct meetings next month. Well, maybe I should ask for a little discussion. Does anybody else want to talk about it first? Franco?
We going to require everybody to wear masks?
Well, the state law tells me really what we do there and I would say, let's do it this way because. I don't know what they're doing. Wear a mask if you really want to wear a mask. I, I'm not going to tell somebody not to wear a mask. I'm not going to tell someone to put it on. I don't know what the law is going to be next week or next month. I, I, you know, who would I be to say that or who would we be as a board? To even suggest it. We, we, we don't supersede the state law, but you know, um. It's up to you guys. You know what? I'll leave it up to you guys. You want to wear masks? Is, is, and you want people coming in to wear masks? We could say we'll have in. In-person meetings, but everyone must maintain wearing a mask, if that's what you like.
Let's do like the, the state does it. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't wear a mask. Leave it up to the individual.
Well, that's one, one way to look at it, but I'm going to ask everybody for their input on mask, no mask and, or whatever. Again, I can't make the law. I can only say what we could do for us to stay safe. So we don't bring it to somebody else or whatever, you know?
I mean.
And we do have elderly gentlemen on this board, so.
I was going to say, if any, if anybody has a. Uh, can, health condition that makes them vulnerable or somebody in their house that, you know, I, I don't. So, um, but if anybody else wants to say that they do, um, I would think about that, you know? Just saying.
And again, we don't know the people coming in. So, you know, do we, we got, we're inviting people, so we want to have some sort of answer to give to them. Is Franco just that? You know, do we mandate a mask or don't we? You know?
Yeah, okay.
So, and it's us who we might bring it to our, our families and people. You know, I've got a newborn baby grandson. The last thing I want to do is get him sick. And he's pre-meet a month, so.
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly what, that's exactly what I'm talking about. And if, uh, yeah, I'm, nobody wants to give up what their. Condition might be. I, I, right now I don't have, I mean, knock wood, right now I don't have one uh or a person that I'm worried about, but if somebody else might, so um. You know.
So let's first start, let's start off with a, a, a vote through. Does anybody else want to talk about it? I mean. You, Larry, you got anything you want to input or?
Yeah, can you, we also have a virtual at the same time. If somebody's afraid to come in, they can come in with via the computer. They can still be heard, they can still be part of it.
I, and I, I, listen, I think it's a great idea. I just always worry about our staff and all the added work that we're giving them to do it to. So if it's no issue to the staff, I think that's a great idea. So, but we won't have a one hundred percent in-person board, which is another. You know, some of us all have meetings from home and if it works, it works. I. Again, I don't know what the state is going to mandate and we do have to stay within the guidelines of the law for these meetings too, so.
And uh, could we limit the uh number of people uh who attend ea- from each project and also in total?
That may be an issue, I'm going to say, because then you, Dave, tell me if I'm right or wrong. And I wish Paul wants here, but we can talk about it again on Monday, but I mean, on next week, but I think that. You know, who do we tell cut gets to come in? You know what I mean? So you can't have six applicants. And say to the seventh person, you can't come in. You know what I mean?
Thank you. I was thinking like, you know, say we have a big project and then they have ten people on their design team, but we don't need all. I mean, the rest of them could be virtual or whatever. We don't need all ten people in the room with us.
Agreed. All right. I see what you're saying there. Sure.
Do we as a board, if we do the virtual and then in-person, we as a board need to attend? In-person to vote or can you vote also virtually? Because that's a.
It's a weird thing, but we're voting virtually now. You know what I mean?
But it's.
We're not sure if that matters.
But we're a hundred percent virtual right now.
I got you.
Go to virtual and in-person. What's the plan for voting? What would be legal?
Well, the town board is doing it right now.
How's that working out with the town, Dave? Is it?
It's working out quite well. Um, I think we're still in the, in that period where the state is allowing us to do a hybrid meetings. Um, there is some discussion uh and evidently a ruling uh that says that if you're going to be a board member who votes. Um, when you announce the location of the meeting, you announce it, um, you know, if you're going to do a hybrid meeting, uh, it'll be town hall. Um, you know, twelve church street and the address of the person uh who was virtual. Because the public needs to have access to the place where decision-making happens. That, that, that's the ruling. Uh, it is the craziest load of crap I've ever seen, uh, because uh, you know, although, because I, Scott, you're at work, right? So, yeah, we're not going to give the work address. Then that's, that doesn't make any sense. Um, my, my opinion, uh, and I'm not an attorney, although I play one on TV, um, i- is that uh. You know, if you guys are here and I recognize you all and you guys are all talking, uh, it's as if you're in the room. Right? Yeah, I don't need you physically present. We know who you are. Um, you know, and your, and your camera's, you know, not off like that. Um, you know, we know it's you making the decision and, and whatever. I, I'm not sure why. It's different if you're physically present versus virtually present. Um, I, I am, I am personally, uh, I will be masked. Um, my, my mother-in-law is in a nursing home and has been uh for a year. And I'm not going to, you know, I don't want to have that hang over me, uh, but um ZVA also masked uh at, at the last meeting. Um, there was a comment made there that, uh, you know, why is everybody masked? Mandates are, the mandate is declared unconstitutional. Um, and my response was, you know, I'm not wearing a mask because of the mandate. Um, so as Sal said earlier, I think I was well, well put, Sal, um, uh, and, you know, and well received, uh frankly. Uh, is that, you know, some of us, you know, have people in our lives that we don't want to get sick. Because we are still losing people, as, as it turns out, even vaccinated people. So, um.
Well, I've said it before, the main concern is not about each and every one of us. It's about other people. And if we could just put them before us in every case, our desires and wants and needs really don't matter as long as we know we're not taking it back to somebody else who could get sick. And, and, you know, if we're all respectable grown men and I think in women, I believe that we should at least have that um thought behind it. Believe what you want, that's on you, but I think that's um, you know, we're caring about others. It's not so much us.
So I say, I think we have, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lambros, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? I mean, me personally, I'm okay with in-person, but you know, based on news reports. Um, I mean, my feelings, why don't we push this back maybe and, and circle back to this conversation for another month? From what I understand. You know, there's going to be some changes on CDC guidelines and more importantly, state guidelines, you know, sometime in the uh, in, in the month of March. Um, why don't we temporarily, you know, just keep it virtual for, for another month? And then maybe in, uh, you know, at the March meeting, have this conversation again. I mean, we're going to, we're going to benefit from, you know. Better visibility and, you know, also equally as important, you know, the weather is going to turn a little bit in our favor to. You know, hopefully, you know, push the, uh, you know, the virus loads down even further.
But, and again, I'm bringing it up only just to be in front of this so that we are actively trying to do what. A majority of us would like to do. So, um, so there we have it. So now we've got another discussion where I can just ask a vote. You want to do it now, make a decision now or wait out another month? Go right through the board. Anybody want to wait another month?
Yeah, I do.
I do. I do.
I know, I don't have a vote, but I, I think it's a wise idea.
Then, then that's perfect and we'll hold this conversation again a second time later on. Again, it's just. It's to be in front of it and you know what? If we're not doing that, we're not doing our due diligence to try and, you know, be as transparent as we can be too. So. There, that's what it's all about. So, um, what else did I have to talk about? There was something else. Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, when we do go back live, um, I have a, a experiment I like to do with, with you all. Um, the town has acquired a very large twenty-seven inch uh tabletop tablet. Uh, it's touchscreen, um, and what'll, it'll allow us to do. Someone on the board, in fact, Sal mentioned this once upon a time about sort of doing the technology piece and I'm not dubbing this on you, Sal, I swear to God. Uh, but it's, it's a big tablet. Um, it's, uh, you, you'll be amazed when you see it. It is touchscreen. It's tied to, it'll be tied to the laptop and the laptop that drives the WebEx meeting, which is not what's happening now, but is when we're downstairs. And tied to the big monitor on the wall. Um, so instead of having someone have to stand up and go over to the big screen. To touch it and show the applicant what the hell we're talking about, uh, you'll be able to do that right from the, the big tablet. I only have one. At the moment, but there's a big tablet that's going to sit in front of somebody, the chair or, or whomever raises their hand. Uh, not me, because I'll, I'll have the laptop, but I can do that on there. You noticed tonight when, you know, when somebody asks, um. You know, can you move the map over a little bit? Uh, now the person at the front of the room will be able to just like with a tablet, use their hands to manipulate it. There's a, a little pen, um, that you can use that should write right on the PDF. The circle say. You know, what Sal's idea tonight about moving the, the lane over. Uh, you can write right on that PDF uh that I, that I displayed. Um, and say, this is where it should be and here's where the parking should be and these rocks should be bigger over here. Uh, give me a size for the lighting, uh, the whole thing. Having said all that, uh, we're probably going to need a little training. Um, I'll do some training with whoever. Uh, volunteers or has assigned this duty. Um, uh, and it's, I think it's a fantastic tool. It'll, it'll make. You know, it, so you'll be able to see on the tablet, the whole map, um, displayed right in front of you, twenty-seven inches on the table. Um, you'll be able to pull up other maps, access the internet, yada, yada, yada. So long story short, we do go back live. Uh, whoever is going to do this piece for the board, whether it's, you know, Scott or Charlie or Sal or Franco or Lambros, whoever. Uh, um, Jerry, uh, I, I want to assign you, Larry, because. I don't know. We certainly want to sign Carl because we know Carl on technology. Um, but uh, because it'll be upside down.
That's not fair. He's not here. He's not here to defend himself.
I'll, I'll bust his chops when I see him. So anyway, I'm just bringing it out there. Somebody's going to have to think about, you know, doing it and it's a cool tool. Um, I think it's going to be, uh, you know, I, I, an asset for all the boards. Um. And like I said, it's an experiment with you guys. Ultimately, the long-term plan is to have a, a piece of technology displayed in front of all of you. Um, that you'll be able to, you know, share ideas on, be able to write on. Um, and show the applicant and it'll all be displayed up on the big screen. There'll be another one eventually on the other side of the room. So I'm just bringing it out there. Think about it. If you're interested in doing it, um, let me know. I'll set it up downstairs and come in. I'll show you after hours even and see if it works.
All right, two more things and then I'm out real quick. One would be, you know, in the county, when we take um these meetings, we have these meetings, we get credited time. For, towards our, our classes. You know that, right, Dave? So I get every, every meeting I attend there, I get a certain amount of time saying that I've met the, the qualifications for my class. Uh, do we, we don't do that same thing here, do we? Or we can, can't we?
Uh, the, so the town, so there are no credit police. The town board is the credit police. Um, and, and what happens is, uh, right now for every, um, uh, meeting you attend. This meeting, uh, I give you eight seconds.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's something.
Towards your four hour, correct, towards your four hour requirement. Now, there is no, there is no, um, uh, there, there is a requirement. Uh, and the town board can check on it, um, and they can remove people for cause of not doing the required four hours.
Again, I'm just trying to help those who don't take the classes all the time and. The requirement, we can get some points for being here at least. That's number.
Yeah, so I would, I mean, that's a discussion that you could have with, uh, with, um.
I'll talk today. Yeah, so that's, that's one thing. And if you guys are all into that, you think it's a good idea. Um, I think it's, it'll help with some of us and, you know, it just gives you that extra time, right? So the other thing would be that we are going to be attending a um tribe board meeting in March. And I don't remember the date, Dave, if you could help me out with it, because I don't have my other email opened.
Yes, it's the date of the top of the board meeting, sixteen.
And it would be before the board meeting, if I'm not.
Before the regular town board meeting.
So, the, you know, that coming in, in just, just kind of keep on your toes for the things and the issues that are coming up for that. Will probably be asked questions or, uh, you know, what position we take on certain things right off the bat. So, um, just so you know, and we're. I, I don't think there's another meeting. I do know that the adaptive reuse um conversation that we had in emails and at the last. Board meeting, um, we spoke about things that was written up and it was sent off to, um. You know, the town board for review. It, I believe it's, there's still a public um hearing is open. Uh, I don't think they've resolved anything yet or, or come to voting on it to send up to, and the county hasn't even answered to it yet. I don't believe from the last planning board meeting I was at the county, they didn't even bring it up. So, um, just so we're on top of it. So if there's any other questions you guys might have, the next meeting may be the place to do that. Um, that they, at the, um, excuse me, the uh tribe board meeting.
There he is. Yeah. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I switched over on my cell phone. I'm not sure what was happening there, but I do know I came to this meeting. For an hour and a half inside here with a purpose. Um, and there's a reason. So as far as the sign goes, just because I don't want there to be any discrepancy, the original. Propo- the original approved sign was a four foot by eight foot sign. Um, over the last, well, with the whole business thing changing and everything, I ended up changing the logo. This was actually the old logo that's on my shirt now. Um, and I ended up going for the, the newer modern look, but it didn't fit on the four by eight sign as well. So the whole reason I'm here is to make sure that it's known the approval. Is to, what we're looking for is an approval to change from a four foot by eight foot sign. Which is thirty-two square foot to the proposed sign of thirty-eight inches by a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty inches. Which still equates to thirty-two square foot. It's just a longer and narrower sign to accommodate the logo. Um.
Were you able to hear, were you able to hear us at all, Stephen?
I could hear you guys. I could hear you guys the whole entire time and that's, that was, like I said, my apology. I probably, if I would have swapped, I probably would have knew. So my apologies on that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, those facts were known. The reason why it was turned down the first time also is because it was supposed to be on an eight foot tall pole. The town told him, told me monument. So I gave in and at this point I just, I need, I want the sign out by the street. So I'm going with the monument style to, um, as per the town. And like I said, the only, only other change was the actual dimensions on the sign to accommodate the logo.
Well, I could tell you that we appreciate you coming back a second time, but your approval for that sign has already been, been made. So it's bringing, you pulled us all the other information. We saw some dimensional things on the, on the drawing that were there too.
So maybe, maybe since we came back, we should rescind that and then.
We could schedule this for March, you know?
Stop it, stop it.
Permit now. We gave you two thumbs up. We didn't expect to see you again. You're good.
You're an honorable guy doing that. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I, I appreciate that, guys.
Sure. Take care. I appreciate you. So gentlemen, back to everything that we have. Not often do you get somebody so concerned and do the right thing. Isn't that awesome? That's a good thing. So other than that, I just brought those two things to your attention. If there's any other discussion you guys might want or anything. And nothing at all. Okay, gentlemen, who's going to make a motion to adjourn? And second, we got one from Franco and, uh, Jerry. Guys, have a great one. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Have a good night.
Take care, man.